We're about like an hour.
We don't even know. She just started rocking funny.
Okay, ladies and gents, it's 6:00 PM on the dot by the big wall up on the clock. Big clock up on the wall. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight for the city council meeting and wish to like to ask everyone to please rise for invocation and pledges.
Blessed pray. Holy Father, we thank you for all we have. We are blessed with so much more than we could ever deserve. As we begin 2023, please remain by our sides, offering grace, protection, peace, and wisdom. Help us to keep our eyes on you as we look forward for the good of the city. In Jesus' name of Christ, amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You all be seated. Okay. Let the record reflect that all council members are here tonight with the inclusion of our appointed council member that we will be swearing in in just a few minutes, Jeremy Fountain. Again, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
You going to do the honors?
Okay.
I'll come to you.
Well, thank you.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeremy Fountain.
Aye, Jeremy Fountain.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of City Council, position five, of the City of Richwood.
Of the office of City Council, position five, City of Richwood.
And of the State of Texas.
And of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my abilities.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Richwood City Charter and the Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Richwood City Charter and the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Okay. And then we'll do the other one, statement of elected officer. I, Jeremy Fountain, do solemnly swear.
I, Jeremy Fountain, do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not indirectly or directly paid.
Offered, promised to pay.
Offered, promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Promised, contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office or employment.
Or promised any public office or employment.
As a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof, so help me God.
As a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof, so help me God.
Yay.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to public comments. We've got two listed that wanted to speak to the council. William Yerson.
Good afternoon, William Yerson. I'm coming up here to speak, I guess just to let y'all know where I stand on a few things. And it kind of hit me a while ago, once Mr. Fountain got sworn in, congratulations, by the way, to uphold state laws, the city charter, and the constitution. Anyone who knows me knows that I hold those things very, very near and dear to my heart. That includes your civil rights and everything else that I have fought for and everybody else that has been in the military, first responders, anything else has fought for. And I feel as though my civil rights were violated the last council meeting. I feel as though that me coming up here and speaking as a resident, trying to hold my position as a resident and use those civil rights, it was held against me. Nowhere in the city charter, state laws, or the constitution does it say that for any reason, being a friend, having any type of relationship, or any type of knowing each other, keeps you from volunteering for a position in the city. There's nothing. As Councilmember Escalante said in one of the council meetings, even unfortunately, this small city that we're in, sometimes individuals wear multiple hats. It may not be right, but it has to be done. And so, that was, you know, one of the things that was said was, well, your relationship with the chief is in question. Well, if I remember correctly, and let me see if I understand this correctly, the one individual that was allowed to be on CCPD is the chaplain for the police department. He is the chief of police direct chaplain. But that in a way rung a bell to where, okay, maybe not him, no. And so, after speaking with multiple civil rights agencies, after speaking to two different civil rights lawyers, they all seemed to agree, and they're all looking into this a little more for me, that it wasn't a matter of a relationship or a friendship or anything else that kept me from being appointed. It was a civil rights violation because I'm the individual that comes up here and speaks. I'm the individual that comes up here and tries to say, hey, this is wrong, we need to fix this. And it may ruffle feathers in the process. And so, there's that, well, you know what? We don't want him up here. And that's fine if that's what it is, if that's where you stand, if that's how you want to take it. But just understand that I don't stop. I always say what's wrong is wrong, what's right is right. In this situation, I feel the wrong has greatly been done, greatly. And I think any of y'all up there that believe in the constitution, the state laws, the City of Richwood charter, know. And in your heart of hearts, if you believe in those things, a wrong was done. And every time I feel the wrong is done, I will stand here and I will say a wrong has been done.
Yeah, one minute.
And it is up to y'all at that point to decide what you're going to do with that. But when you sit by idly and you let things be done wrong over and over and over, you become an accomplice to those things that are done wrong over and over and over. I ask all of you, don't be an accomplice of something wrong. Do what's right for the city, do what's right for the residents, do what is right in general. Thank y'all for your time.
Thanks, sir. Okay, Leslie Klug.
Hi, Leslie Klug, 105 Hennepin Bird Court. When we moved here nine years ago, I think it was, we moved in February, and at that time, signs were all over Richwood for the KRB movie in the park. Come for popcorn, hot chocolate, movie, the works. We were, most of us were busy, but my oldest, my middle son had a girlfriend at the time, and he wanted to bring her for Valentine's Day movie in the park. But he was running a little late because he had to get off work. He got off work at six, it started at six. He rushed, picked her up, and headed straight to the park. And he got there just as everybody was loading things back up in the car because nobody else showed up to the movie. And I know now that it was Janet Ellis that begged them, please, no, 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 stay, stay. No, we made all the, you know, we made cocoa, we have popcorn, y'all stay. And Caleb was, I've always raised him, don't make trouble for other people. And I feel bad now because I realize now that it discouraged Mrs. Ellis and the other people on KRB at the time that Caleb wouldn't stay. He said, no, I'm sorry, I'm not going to pitch y'all out like that. It's just two of us. We're, you know, we're good, we'll just go home. And I realize, like I said, as a volunteer, having been a volunteer for most of my adult life, I know how discouraging now that that probably was to them since they worked so hard to put on this event and have nobody show and one couple that did show wouldn't stay. So I know how discouraging that can be to a volunteer's heart, and you kind of lose heart, and you don't really want to keep participating when there's not a whole lot of reward for it. And I've been on CCPD for a year now, and you can ask Mr. Count. Most of the time, we barely make our quorum. In fact, we've had to reschedule before because we couldn't even make quorum. And we only had, I think, five members at the time, so we couldn't get three people to show up. And we had to reschedule. So to have council turn, and I am friends with the Yersons, I know them, but I haven't talked to them. I haven't talked to either of them. This isn't anything about any of, either of them. This is about council deciding. I understand you didn't want to put him on council. Mr. Fountain is probably the most qualified of the applicants that came in anyway. And I can understand how some of you probably didn't want to work with him there, but you should not have decided for the rest of us that are on a committee that we don't get to work with him either. None of us had a beef with him. It's not like we were going to allow him to just run rampant with the chief's agenda or whatever. The reason there's a quorum is so that we can all keep each other in checks and balances and that kind of thing. Every one of you, Mr. Fountain, you're excluded from this because you didn't get to talk last time, but every one of you at the end of the meeting said thank you to all the volunteers. Thank you to people that volunteer and give your time and that kind of thing. And then you turned down somebody that was, and it was so blatant and deliberate that it was clearly, that he was clearly being singled out. I just find that so discouraging. And I'm telling you, that's not good for the City of Richwood, it's not good for volunteers. It's, it's not good, it's not good practice. And I think all of you should really rethink turning down somebody that's willing to volunteer. Like I said, it's not even somebody you would have to work with, something, somebody that another committee was going to have to work with. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, ma'am.
Hey, can I add my name?
Yes, you can.
In that public comment? Thank you. And I'm not going to rise, but as Leslie did say, that was something that really should surprise me, and I had figured I would address it here. No one, to my knowledge, asked CCPD how they felt about it. I know almost everyone here has my number, I'm on that board. As far as I know, y'all didn't ask anybody on CCPD. Our liaison didn't talk to us either, not, not to say that's anything, but these boards and these volunteers, we struggle, especially, there are some boards that if you're on a different board, you can't volunteer for that board. We struggle so hard in the city to get volunteers in the future, and this is regardless of who it is or what board it is. I mean, it wouldn't hurt y'all to attend any of these meetings anyway, but if you're not going to attend, at least have the decency to email or call us. Krista can get you our emails to find out if we want to, or why we need someone on these boards, and if we would work with that person. It's the least you could do, just in my opinion. So, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. It looks like that's it. Okay, let's move on to consent agenda. Do I have any?
I don't. I have a question on the consent agenda. For the CCPD board, has anyone resigned?
Yes, we've had two open positions for most of this year.
Okay, which two resigned? Because the last one that they had posted still had six board members.
The most recent one was Kat Vanegas. She resigned mid-year.
And then?
The one before that was Kathy Vickers. Or maybe it was Kat Vanegas, then Kathy Vickers.
Neither of them resigned. They had been there.
They never came, and they never came, and so I flat out asked them, are you wanting to serve anymore? Because I, we could not make meetings. And so, both of them, at that point, decided to tell me they no longer wanted to serve. And so, we've been without two for the whole year, basically.
So this, it's supposed to be seven.
It's a seven-person board.
Okay. Because the last that I had seen, there was already six, and when we assigned that last seventh person, the last meeting, I assumed that was full.
No, I wouldn't have put the votes on consent if it wasn't.
Okay.
It would have been a discussion item to pick out of the two.
Great, okay, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, or?
I think I'd just kind of a comment on it. It sounds like from the two current serving members of the CCPD that there's an issue with quorum, and, you know, that seems like a root cause, correct? I mean, so, I'm hoping that even with one active participant, would that enable quorum? Or are we still going to be in the same predicament?
Yes, we have to beg someone to come from their home.
He had just gotten in from out of town.
He had drove like eight hours or something.
And he drove here, so we can make quorum at our last meeting.
And it's not unusual for us to have to literally, I have to call all these people.
I mean, we're possibly about to leave another member, if that's what you're asking.
Right. So, I mean, to my understanding, even the newly appointed person wasn't able to make it either, so.
Well, the meeting was the day after he was appointed, so he didn't even get notice of the meeting before because he wasn't on the board yet. So, him not attending that meeting wasn't really a direct reflection on him not coming.
No, no, I understand. I'm just, I'm just trying to get to the root cause of why we're discussing the need of volunteers that are going to actively serve as a meeting quorum. So, even by, if we're about to lose a person, about to assign another person, are we still going to be coming back to the same root cause of not having quorum?
I think we're forever going to have this problem.
Well, you just said you're about to lose somebody.
I mean, I have a member that hasn't come to the last three meetings, so I'm about to reach out to him and be like, are you still able to serve? And he's going to tell me yes or no.
It's not in CCPD, it's quite a few.
I mean, it's all boards.
Right, but right now, I'm talking about CCPD. I mean, this is what was on the agenda.
And if I had three people to present and I could ask him to step down because he doesn't come, I would.
And I know that there are people who wanted to step down. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're good, I just.
I'm just trying to get to the root cause. If this will help resolve the root cause, if possible, people stepping down again? Are we, are we going to be here in two months again saying, hey, we need quorum again? We're not meeting quorum.
We might be.
Several people were basically a name on the paper.
Yeah.
Or only on there to fill the board so that we had enough members to actually spend our financial money. We have obligations as a board, and one of those is meeting, and we only meet quarterly. We have to do a lot of budgetary stuff and do all that in a very limited time. And so, if there were some people who I think would have taken their name off a long time ago.
Well, if I have five people and it goes down to four, then we can't meet.
That's, that's what we're.
So, if I had five, there's one man that I feel doesn't necessarily want to serve, but I can't ask him to kind of step down because then we have four, we can't meet it all, and we lose the money we take in.
We're literally begging.
So, once I can get these spots filled, I can try and then go after another spot.
Do we, do we have any idea why it's so difficult to find volunteers for this? Because, like, is there any?
Because nobody cares.
Because it's only, like you said, it's only quarterly, it's not like it's a huge commitment.
Right.
It's volunteerism all over the United States. Same reason that we, we struggle for firefighters, same reason we struggle for KRB people.
Yeah, I could have put it in a nicer way, but it's apathy. People don't care, they don't want to waste, they don't want to take.
I mean, we lose one more person for KRB, we have no more parks.
Yeah.
So, that's just where we're at all across the city.
And if you're going to ask that question, I will say that what Leslie said does hit on that. I have been volunteering in this city since I moved here, before I was even on council. And one of the biggest reasons that was given to me by some of the people who aren't even alive now, bless their hearts, who used to volunteer for this city, was that they felt like they weren't respected or welcomed or appreciated for what they did at the time. And any time that they complained about the city, they were basically pushed out. And this was not anyone in this room that I know of, but they, they did, and they, they felt like they were just pushed out.
That was.
Well, when you discourage someone to that level, you lose people, no one, and then they tell their friends not to volunteer too. So.
That was what I was questioning, some kind of an exit survey as to why we've lost so many volunteers, because that's the same thing I keep hearing, is they feel bullied and they feel unappreciated, and they don't feel like their time is worth the effort.
Yes.
And so, I feel like fixing the root problem is going to help us to get volunteers.
Well, it's not going to help us either to turn down people that want to volunteer.
Yeah, there's so few that will give their time.
I know, it was even the lady that stepped down only did it because she doesn't have time for both that and grandchildren. She just doesn't have, and of course, grandchildren run.
Yes, they come first.
Every time.
Who manages the CCPD? Is that something that was created by the police, the chief? Or?
The council.
The ordinance establishing it.
So, council is required by the charter to appoint members?
Right. Council's required to appoint all members of all boards.
Of all boards.
And the residents voted, vote to renew that board?
Yes.
So, it's something that the voters wanted us to have.
Is it something we can make from seven to five for a quorum? Like, for a committee? Like, you know, council's five, is there, I don't know how many is KRB?
KRB is just based on the amount of people on the board.
I'm just curious if that was something the council created.
As far as CCPD, that's, I mean, that's mandated by the local government code on that, so I don't think we have an option.
No.
And then the rest are by charter or ordinance, whatever, however they were established. So, KRB is just based on how many people they have. If they have five, then it's three.
I have a question real quick. So, you said that all the boards are approved by, the members are approved by council, but volunteer firefighters and reserve police are not, right?
Police are, but firefighters are not. They're not a committee, it's just boards and committees is what I'm speaking on. So, police and fire are separate.
Is it possible to amend the charter to allow board members from CCPD and KRB do the same thing?
They could. I mean, there's no, the only board that doesn't allow members to serve a multiple is planning and zoning in the city council, so.
That's what I thought.
Somebody could be on CCPD and KRB.
Okay.
I'm going to touch on that during the charter review as well. I suspect the council should be cutting off anybody's willingness to volunteer. We're short everywhere.
I know it's been that way for the length of time that I've lived here. We've had, we've had fire departments well with personnel, and then we, then we dropped off. We've had, my wife and I, my wife was on council, she was also a member of the, of the KRB, or back then it was beautification. Then I was firefighter, EMT, judge. So, you know, things that, it's, cities run dry a lot of times when it comes to volunteers.
Yeah, we're still a small city, and I think when you look at the number of people that just come and go within the city, it's a lot. There's a lot of people moving in, moving out.
Right.
We have quite a few new members. I've seen some of them at the KRB, they come up and they move from out of state, so they try to get involved with it. That's, in my opinion, a very big challenge, which is people move a lot.
And I'll tell you personally, I wouldn't turn down a volunteer unless there was some real good reason, some criminal reason, some situation that required by law.
Besides myself, there's only been one in the City of Richwood ever turned down, and that was for legal reasons.
Are we, are we considering the six other people that we didn't consider for this one vacant position?
They didn't apply for that.
They didn't apply for it.
They applied for the council position, they didn't apply for.
This, I mean, for council, that's what I'm referring to, like, six other people didn't get picked, but they're not here as well.
But there's only one vacant seat, right?
I understand.
I mean, they, I can't, I can let them know what I have open, but if they don't want to apply for it, they don't want to apply for it. It's like Mr. Yerson applied for both.
And we have had, actually, in 2016, or 2017, one of the others, when I was on council, we did a huge push. We had a huge event here at the city hall. I know because I spent a lot of money and time planning it. It was a big open house. We had tables for all of our departments. We had all the local restaurants bring food, and it was like a meet and greet. And we did not get maybe, maybe two volunteers signed up, and it was a huge push and effort. And it's not that we have not tried. Obviously, it's good to always keep trying, but it's not like this is something that is for a lack of effort. The city has it very public, very open, they're very open about what they want. So, it's not for a lack of effort, it seems like it's for a lack of interest.
Okay, so, again, with consent agenda, do we have any other discussion, or do we have any motions?
I like, I think it needs further discussion. I'd like to remove item B from the consent agenda. That's a motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by council member.
Strong.
Johnson.
Council member Johnson, and seconded by council member Strong. Council member Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council member Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Council member Yarborough, how do you vote?
Aye.
And council member Escalante, how do you vote?
Aye.
And? My mind's frying tonight. Jeremy Fountain, how do you vote?
Nay.
Okay. Let the record reflect that we have one nay, rest, eyes on the, on the issue at hand, and we will move that to the, consider items for consent agenda, remove from consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the main items on the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion made by council member Johnson to approve items on consent agenda.
On that, the budget report, is that? So, if we have questions?
Yes.
Sorry. No problem.
One night at a time.
That's okay.
Okay. I saw some of the email come back, I guess I assume like some of these that are the higher, like the capital equipment.
Okay, stand by, Jerry.
Sorry.
Okay, we can, we can, after we get a second, we can go with the discussion. So, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, council member Strong makes a second. Okay, we have further discussion. Council member Fountain.
Some of these budget items that you see that are higher, is that just because that's when they're paid? Is that how, because I noticed.
Yes, we're early in the fiscal year.
Right.
So, insurance is paid once a year, beginning of the year. Some of our contractual agreements are paid at the beginning of the year.
So, like all your capital equipment, all that, it's just like stuff you bought ahead?
We make one payment a year on our fire trip.
Okay.
So, those kind of things, it kind of front loads the expenditures.
And several of our supplemental items will come out early.
And professional services, that's a, the, well, there's a lot of, they all, they're kind of like, each fund has its own.
Yeah, so I would be happy to sit down with people over what they include, but in administration, professional services.
That's my legal review.
Yeah, which one was the legal?
The attorney's fees.
Yeah.
Professional services is the attorney's fees.
We have a line item for attorney's fees.
I know, but these are categories on here. This is summarized. So, there's line items within these categories.
Oh, I have to see that.
And that's on the general fund, right?
Yes.
Professional services.
So, the general fund is broke down into different departments. So, administration is everything.
They love each other.
Is everything that happens within this building, basically. And then the attorney fees that are charged to administration are included in those professional services. The other attorney fees are under judicial because that's for municipal.
Right, right.
So, it'd probably take a long time to go through everything, but I would be happy and willing to sit down and show you the unsummorized budget. Because everybody else has seen that when it was approved.
Right. Well, I can, it's online, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll look it up.
But if you have any questions.
Okay.
I try to be here most days.
All right. Good enough.
Okay, any other further discussion or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Council member Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Council member Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay. Let the record reflect that the motion carries. Okay. We have a presentation from the 2022 Charter Review Commission.
That's all you get. I'm going that far. So, actually, all the members are present tonight of our committee, and I'm really glad that they are. Y'all appointed all of us to charter review. We did start out, we were going to just go over it piece by piece by piece, as some of the members have done multiple times. And then the first meeting, we decided that we would just talk about it all the next meeting. And then ask questions and get clarification and get some attorney's opinions and some different things. And then come back for the last meeting to approve it and put it forward to you. There was some things that we are recommending be changed. But before I get into that, I wanted to appreciate Mark Guthrie, Amanda Reynolds, Kimberly Mayer, and Leslie Clu for volunteering and taking the time to tediously comb through our entire city charter. And including grammatical errors, Ms. Leslie was amazing about checking and double checking, which we found out that we don't even have to put on the ballot. We can just have approved. So, that probably saved us some money in proofreading expenses. So, we appreciate that, all of these volunteers very much. I was so happy to serve with them. It was a very smooth process. Everyone worked really hard and actually was very dedicated to it. So, the first thing that we are recommending is, I'm assuming y'all have this in your notes, section 702. It's qualified voters of the city of Richwood initiating legislation by submitting a petition addressed to the city council, which requests the submission, I'm not going to read all of this. Anyway, so I felt, after having been involved in the past in a lot of different things where residents came forward and wanted to have something voted on by the residents, or wanted to be involved, which we were just having a huge discussion about how hard it is to get residents to want to be involved. And sometimes it seems like it's a huge burden to meet the threshold for participation, to get it in front of council and to get it in front of the voters. And so, we make the suggestion of reducing the qualified voters of the city of Richwood from 20% down to 10% of the qualified voters of the city. It shall be signed. Anyway, basically, it's reducing the threshold for which our residents not can come forward and make something happen, but to get it on a ballot so that the entire city can vote on it, which is incredibly important. Because when people feel like they have that ability, it does make them more interested in what's going on, because they don't feel so powerless in the face of, you know, having to convince the entire council to put it. It may be something they don't like, like term limits for council members. An entire council, I'm not saying y'all, but an entire council could shut that down. Well, now they only have to have 10% to get that put onto a ballot for the whole city to vote on. So, I think that was a great idea. The second thing is to change it so that after we do our job, in Charter Review Committee, section 1112, instead of that y'all may order, which I don't know why it ever said may, it's so that don't do, put what we have suggested on the ballot for voters to vote. So, we're not saying that we're reducing it to 10%. We're saying, what is the city? And so, I think it's just a huge, it's, it's a big thing for me, because I've always advocated for people to be able to be involved in this process without, not everyone can commit to two, to six, to however many years people have volunteered for the city. But if they feel like they're very passionate about something, they do have an opportunity to get in the door. There were some other things that we had discussed. I don't know, do they get the agenda and the notes from our meetings and stuff like that?
Not the notes from the meetings. They haven't, but the agendas are posted. They're not sent out, but they're posted.
Was it the Charter Review Committee that you can't serve? There was something...
It's planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
Why I don't have a board.
So, these are some of the things that we noticed within it. Planning and zoning, it's policy.
It's by ordinance.
It's by ordinance. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm trying to remember everything, but I did not bring my notes, because it was a lot to carry, and I just wasn't going to do it. Planning and zoning is required that you not serve on other boards and commissions in order to volunteer for planning and zoning. I have volunteered to serve on planning and zoning. I have an open application for almost every board and commission in this city. But I can't, because I've served on other boards and commissions. We have a core group of volunteers within the city that serve on everything. It's just the way it is. One of the suggestions that we had said was maybe council should consider that ordinance, amending it so that y'all aren't planning and zoning and city council, but we could have an actual board to participate in that. Because burdens like saying you can't serve on any other board and commission is probably why we can't get any members to be on board. And it does create some conflicts later down the road, when someone from the outside looks at it and says, hey, I need this. Oh, we'll have to go to council. Oh, it's the same city council and the planning and zoning, it's all the same people. This opens it up to where people do feel like they can participate. If y'all don't mind, I would like to let anyone else who is on, say what I really need to say before y'all vote. Is that cool? Is that out here?
That's fine.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? It's all yours.
I would like to vote for our parks.
I like it. I like them. Okay.
I, I just a quick comment.
Yeah, more.
Again, I want to thank everybody like Lauren said. I sat on a board with smart people that were proofreading stuff, so I was definitely not the smartest kid in the class. So, they found a lot of stuff in there that, that needed to be fixed. So, they did a great job. Again, volunteerism, it goes back to appreciation, and I definitely want to tell you guys that appreciation, because this one that got reviewed, the board didn't show up.
Any other member comments? Well, one thing here, I will tell you myself, I appreciate everything that y'all have done. It's very important for y'all to come in and be part of the checks and balances and to look at the things that we need to, you know, from the city's, from the citizen's standpoint. Be that voice for the citizens on issues that we need to bring up and change. I look at these, the last, well, the last two that's been there since I've been here. And I will tell you that it's, each and every one of them have been important issues. And I appreciate the hard work and the good thought that's gone into it. All righty. Any questions from the council members for discussion?
In regards to changing that, like, that zoning and that thing, is that something we would have put on the agenda?
Yeah, so planning and zoning is created by ordinance, so we would need to just amend the ordinance if that's what...
You can suggest that as a future agenda item.
Yes.
As a council, we can do that.
So, that's why charter couldn't put, they can't amend that.
Anyone else?
Just wanted to maybe ask, you know, council or legal as well, what, feeling out how our other cities are? Do they have a 20% rule, a 40% rule, a 10% rule? Just trying to gauge what our, what our neighbors around us have, you know, are we going to be the...
It's different everywhere you go.
Right. And that's what I'm trying to assess here in the lower Bressory County area. What are our fellow cities of a city our size, Clu, you know, Freeport, and any of these other smaller towns, Jones Creek? What, what do they look like?
Do you want to explain the numbers to them?
Oh, like the percentage of voters, the thing? So, there's no other city our size other than Iowa Colony, really? We can't compare to Clu.
Maybe 1% or...
Yeah. And so, they're, but they're all general law. So, general law...
Change the number of how many it takes.
Well, the local government code for general law cities is 5%. So, we're still above that.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's what I was trying to understand, or at least know where the minimum standard is, where we are currently.
So, we're barely home rule. So, for general law, they would have to be at a lower threshold.
But we're at home rules.
Right, barely.
But you're saying general city is...
General law city, which is government, the actual government code, they are, it's 5%. So, we are still...
So, we're not comparing apples to apples here, so...
There's no other city in our area to compare them to. We're, we're barely home rule. So, all I can go by is Bressory, which is general law, Iowa Colony is general law, Jones Creek's general law. There's no other home rule city that's our size in our area.
Would you mind giving them the numbers?
Like registered voters?
Registered voters, what the threshold was and what we're looking at. How we changed it. How we定了it.
Yeah, I'm just, yes.
On a petition.
Like three or 4,000, I believe that's what the number was. I mean, residents, but a registered voter.
Registered voters, yeah.
1,200, 1,500, something like that.
And then compare that to how many people actually vote.
Right, yeah. I'm going to pull it up right now.
Thank you.
2,400 or something.
Oh, we're still on the same topic, because I was supposed to say something else. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Go ahead. I'll give her time.
They'll give her time.
Sorry. The... What were we just talking about? How many people vote in the elections and how many? Oh, we also had talked about, if in the charter, about May versus November elections. And that's something that the council might consider going forward. We had talked about whether this is within our jurisdiction or not, if this is something we even consider or mess with, because it says in there in the election on this day in the charter. And then we asked, is this something that we make these choices about? It was just a recommendation from our board. We're not saying, you know, we're putting this on the ballot. This was just a recommendation to consider if getting more voter participation might be possible by having elections in November. We also talked about how, I mean, it wasn't like we made a decision that that was a good idea. It was a suggestion that I, we were bringing to talk about it on council and see if that might be something that we could do to possibly make it...
Oh, yeah, no doubt. I mean, 100% agree. I mean, during a general presidential election, you're going to have, like, when I came for council, there was a lot of votes versus an off year, and you have less than 100.
It is something we talked about as far as there are a lot of things, like, everybody else does it at the same time in the other cities and stuff like that. But it's something that, you know, as we come up, come up for this, to, to make the suggestions, that you might consider that.
The registered voters for last year was 28, 29. At the current threshold, we would need 566 signatures. At the new proposed amount, we would need 282. And last election, we had 137 voters.
No, I mean, I, I think, I think it's great to lower it, to try to get that. I'm just looking out for, from a legal, general, home rule standpoint, are we going below any threshold that would get us in trouble?
No, that's why I brought up the general law, which is what is the lowest, which is 5%.
Right, but we're not a general law city. We're home rule.
And everything that we did, we already ran through the law.
I'm just letting, that is the threshold, is 5%.
That's what I'm asking.
5% is the threshold. That's what I'm saying.
Covering our bases here from a legal standpoint, making sure we're not...
I should have included that. That was part of the, I should have said, was that we did consult legal and multiple other issues, which we did not include if it was not something that, we had questions, but...
And all propositions were ran by legal prior to them adopting.
Right.
Yeah, that was a question. I'm just making sure we're not, you know, by, by lowering the threshold, we're not getting ourselves in any... Thank you.
Okay, any further questions, or do we have any motions?
Is there a motion or just a presentation?
No, we'll vote on it later.
Oh, we'll vote on, okay. Sorry about that. Okay, moving right on. There are no other questions. Discussion and action items. Discussion or discuss and consider ordinance 23-501, calling the May 6, 2022 general election and approving a joint election contract with Bressory County.
So, this is same as normal. Every year, we're required to, every city joins in this contract with the Bressory County to host our elections. I meet with them next week, so just need to get the election called and approval to join in.
Okay, any discussion or motions?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 23-501, calling the May 6, 2022 general election, approving a joint election contract with Bressory County.
Okay, motion made by council member Johnson. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by council member... Ah, Fountain. Council member Fountain. I'll, I'll wait up here. Okay, council member Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Oh, that's, I'll fix in the motion. I copy and paste it from last year's agenda.
Okay, council member Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council member Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Council member Yarborough, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council member Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
And council member Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect that the motion is carried. Okay, discussion B, discuss and consider 23-502 ordinance, calling, now, that's the wrong one. Or is it? No, it is. Calling a special election for May 6, 2023 for the consideration and proposed amendments to the Richwood City Charter. Any discussion? Or any motions to approve, disprove, or otherwise?
I'll make a motion to discuss. I'll make a motion to consider ordinance 23-502, calling for a special election for May 6, 2023 for the consideration of proposed amendments of the Richwood City Charter.
Council and Fountain, it's got to be approved, not considered.
Approved.
Or refused.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 23-502, calling for a special election for May 6, 2023 for the consideration of proposed amendments to the Richwood City Charter.
Okay, a motion made by council member Fountain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by council member Escalante. Council member Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Council member Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect that the motion carries. Okay. Discuss and consider ordinance 25-503, calling a special election for May 20, the May 6, 2023 for the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax at the rate of 1/4 of 1% to continue providing revenue for the maintenance and repair of municipal streets.
So, this has to be reauthorized every four years for us to continue to receive that 1/4 of 1% from sale tax.
Okay. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 23-503, calling a special election for May 6, 2023 for the reauthorization of the local sales and use tax at the rate of 1/4 of 1% to continue providing revenue for the maintenance and repair of municipal streets.
Okay, council member Johnson has made the motion, seconded by council member Yarborough. Council member Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Aye.
Council member Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Okay, let the record reflect that the motion carries. Okay, moving to item D, consider items removed from consent agenda, which would be item B from, or from consent agenda. Appoint William Yerson to the Crime, Control, and Prevention District Board. We have discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint William Yerson to the Crime, Control, and Prevention District Board.
Okay, we have a motion made by council member Yarborough, or?
Fountain.
Fountain?
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second made by council member Johnson. Council member Johnson, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Strong, how do you vote, ma'am?
Nay.
Council member Yarborough, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Council member Escalante, how do you vote, sir?
Nay.
And council member Fountain, how do you vote, sir?
Aye.
Wilted.
Okay, let, let the record reflect that the motion is carried with two nays. Mr. Yerson, thank you for your service. Thank you for coming up and stepping up to help us.
I have a quick question real quick. On discussion and action items, D, how are these, this is the first time in all my city councils I'm seeing that item D, consider items removed from consent agenda, has ever been put on a agenda topic. And going back on the last six that I have here, none of that was ever put in here, so I don't know if that was pre-planned or...
It's always been done.
No, it hasn't. I'm looking at, I'm looking at all the agenda topics.
Can I finish? In our old system, it used to automatically populate into our agendas, and it doesn't anymore. And so, I have caught that, it doesn't do that on the last agenda topic that we had to remove it, and so now it's being put on there.
Because the prior month it wasn't.
Correct.
Very odd. Thank you.
You still have the right to remove things from consent and consider later.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just perplexed how it appears on the consent and action item now to consider it.
Remember last month, they had to move it down, and I kind of got confused with that, because they moved it. They mainly moved it during the meeting.
Yeah.
On the same topic, y'all did it, so.
Okay, capital improvement projects update.
Okay.
Call.
Sorry, the story behind that. The CBG cog mod application has been submitted. This is where the road and drainage work will run Four Oaks and Briar Creek. So, we're just waiting to see if we get our money. North Water Plant Booster Station, the exterior paint is still in progress. It's been dependent on weather conditions here lately, so they're moving on it as they can. Electric equipment is anticipated for delivery. Stormwater Master Plan Drainage Project is complete. The final walkthrough was, was conducted. Nothing, nothing was really brought to light, any issues. There were several... There were several changes, not financially impactful, just kind of the way we did things along the way, finding things as we went. But everything looks good. The only thing that remains is a little bit of grading and seeding. It is too wet to do the hydro mulch at this time. Matula has committed to some ryegrass or some quick growing grass to try to stab some kind of root system within the slopes. So, they're gonna help us out with that until they can get trucks, hydro mulch trucks on some of these grounds. See, ARPA, the ARPA grant, Terricon is performing, is preparing to perform the bores at South Water Plant for the new pump foundations, motor foundations, and two generator locations. The bid advertisement for the South Water Plant, which will be advertised first, we talked about, is gonna be late January, early February. And generators probably be springtime, April, early May. Sidewalk improvements, everything, the advertisements are already run, will run second time on the 12th of this month. It is advertised on CivCast, and we already have our date for bid opening. I can't quote it, but it's, process is done. The South Water Plant, the interior coating on the tank is complete. We're all a little bit unsure about how this bypass is gonna work. It, it worked out beautifully. It hadn't been easy. It's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, a lot of adjustments, but we got it dialed in pretty good to hit electrical failure and blow up one of Mr. Mercer's BFDs. But it was of no fault of the city. It was, and I've told him about it, we are running on one pump, but we are still running up until tonight with a BWA call for boil water notice if, if we were still on their water, which we are not. We shut the pumps down before they called that notice. The site cleanup for South Water Plant is underway. Having a little bit of trouble with the adjacent property being under construction. We had to move some people around, but they're moving out, and hopefully we can introduce water back to the tank. Now, it's gonna be as soon as BWA can get their issues fixed. So, hopefully it's within a couple of days. Streets, of course, Oakwood Shore's, Streets Stabilization is complete. Bressoria County, from what I understand today, started laying down a prime coat, preparation for the tack coat and asphalt. Should be coming pretty quick. We tried to change the message board, keep everybody five miles an hour slower. There's gonna be some fresh oil situations out there, and hopefully asphalt will come sooner rather than later. I wanna talk a little bit about the diesel spill. Feel it's under control. We had to take it a little further than what we anticipated. We ended up power washing about 1,100 linear feet of concrete ditch. We started out with about 300. We had to turn in two rounds of samples. We did not pull out enough soil where the diesel, it leaked out. Or it leaked into, so the second round of samples, we were waiting on those results, and then we should be done. Other than that, that's all I have.
How does that, the construction in there at that South Tank Water Plant, you know, when you're working in, aren't you redoing the pumps or something down there? When you start on that?
Well, it doesn't go to bid, that's the ARPA grant.
That's the ARPA.
Yes, sir. That's the, it won't go to bid till late January or.
So, hopefully they're kinda done, or will be in the way?
They're done already. We should be, really depending on BWA, a serious doubt pumps are gonna be down for a month.
Right, right.
But, yeah, they're, they're in the process of moving out. So, we'll have all that area clear. For construction to start, it probably won't start until at least March or April.
We'll need to refill that tank, test it.
Right.
That's it.
One question on that, too, Cliff. You say we're down, down to one pump, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Have we thought about contingency, maybe talking with some of our rental people around here for potential diesel pump to, I know it's a big pump, and I know it's gonna have a lot of capacity, but if we lose that leg of water, we're, we might be in pretty bad shape, correct?
Well, we, we still have pump number one. We have three pumps down there, three pumps, three motors.
So, you do have a backup?
Yeah, pump number two and pump number three have BFDs in line, variable frequency drive, controllers in line. Pump number one does not. And that was the backup. The only downfall to losing it, I'm sorry, to using it, is that we're storing 1,500 gallons worth of water, and we pump out at about a 500 gallon a minute rate.
Right.
So, they can only send us about 250 gallons a minute into those temporary tanks. So, that, that's thrown off a little bit. We could use it, but we would have to be on standby, pump and shut it off.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I just was thinking, if, if some, at the worst case scenario, we might, might just look at the specs or something if, if for some reason we lost the backup in the, the spare.
Yeah, if we, if we had to, we can definitely move BWA water. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay, city managers report.
Pretty much everything was covered in, in Cliff's report, except for we, we did, I did finish the post-fire HMGP grant. It's been submitted. We won't hear from that for quite some time, but it's, it's there early. And we're also waiting on the crack sealing company to begin to work on sealing the roads. Cliff spoke with them earlier today. We should be 24th through the, sometime in the month. And that's all I've got. Oh, and our code enforcement officer, Marcus Smith, has had a family emergency. If you would, please keep him in our thoughts and prayers. Nothing wrong with Marcus, but he could sure use some help right now, so thank you much.
Any questions?
How much soil was estimated, like yardage wise, 20 yards?
We had a, we had a 20 and a 30 yard roll-off. They don't allow us to fill it more than about 3/4 full. So, we're, we're estimating probably somewhere between 30 and 35, 300.
Okay.
All right. Okay, Councilmember Comments and Reports. Councilmember Johnson?
Just a report. You attended the KRB meeting last, last week, and they have some news, but I'll let Kimberly tell it, whatever. So, that's good, and just, you know, thanks for all the volunteers, you know, the volunteers coming out in the volunteer spirit. Appreciate it.
Kimberly, you wanna break the news?
I'm not sure which, which news you're talking about, which news I can share.
Did you have a replacement for Jeremy?
Oh, we have reappointed officers. We don't have any people.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, Amanda's our new chairman of the board.
Congratulations.
And Lindsay is our vice chairman.
You're right.
Okay, Councilmember Strong?
I'd like to recognize Law Enforcement Appreciation Day today. I'd like to thank our brave law enforcement officers and all they do to protect and serve our community. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Yarborough?
No comment.
Okay, Councilmember Escalante?
Nothing further to add.
Okay. Councilmember Fountain?
Just a quick thank you to all the volunteers and everybody, you know, anybody watching online. If you wanna come out and help and volunteer, we certainly appreciate it. It's, we have fun with it when we do it. We always have some good events going on, so come out. Again, Cliff, thanks to you and your team for the spill cleanup. So, glad y'all took on it and got that taken care of on the next one.
All right. Okay, with that, I guess I'll give you the mayor's report. I really just kinda wanna go back to the, the last year, kinda remember, although my remembering ain't too good tonight. You know, last year, we started, we came into 2022 off a year that we had a little one, category one storm in 2021. We also had a major freeze in 2021, if I remember correctly. And we spent a lot of time dealing with issues such as tree limbs, no electricity in both of them. Well, mostly no electricity in the second one. And this year, we started off and ended off with a freeze, but it wasn't near as bad as it could have been, and as, as it was in 2021. But I gotta say that I'm, I'm proud of the response to the, to the freezes, to those occasions this year of our public works, our police department. They were out there, they made sure that we, they were ready, and didn't take much, didn't take much to, to get ready. So, we've been, we were lucky last year. We had a few other issues such as, well, we had the road issue where during the drought, the roads cracked. And our public works responded quickly. We got folks to come in and take care of it. If we, they couldn't take care of it, then our folks took care of it, and we are still working on those problems, if I'm not mistaken. But all of that was Mother Nature. This year, we didn't have any storms. This year, we didn't, we were lucky, but we did have the freeze at the end of the year and the freeze at the first. We've had a drought where we've, yes, we've taken a lot more water from BWA than we should, although that's becoming a thing because our city's expanding. And we're working to fix those problems as well. We have a future to, you know, in the future, we have to look at another water tower and how we wanna do that. We need to look in the future to ensuring that we've got quality personnel in management and on our, on our streets, on our public works groups, our fire department. We, we will continue to look to provide what we can, we can, and what's needed for them. We only have so much money to work with, but we do our best not to turn anyone down when they need something, especially if it's a true need. I really think that, oh, let's see, I had a couple other things here I was thinking about. I know y'all hate these things from me when I start reminiscing or thinking about these things. Pandemic ratcheted down, then it ratcheted back up. We've, one thing with our small city, when one person gets it, everybody gets it. But everybody worked hard, and we made it through it. Again, we've, if you look around town, you'll see that our, our drainage system is being worked on and upgraded, and we continue to try to keep that going with as many grants as we can find and try to improve life in the city of Ridgewood as we can. The primary thing that I'm saying, I'm looking at roads and drainage, any kind of rehabilitation that we've done or trying to do, it's movement in the forward direction, not backwards. And one of the big reasons that we've had such movement, one of the big reasons that our town is secure, one of the big reasons that when our houses catch on fire, they don't burn to the ground, is we've got good people. We've got good management here that watches the dollars. We've got committed supervisors. We've got committed crews out on the street, police officers, firefighters, volunteers. Anytime our core, anytime we need something, you can look and you can see the same smiling faces out there, whether they be paid, whether they be volunteered. And believe me, if it's to help another department, or if it's to help another group, they're gonna step up. That's what makes this town great. And it's sad to see issues arise that detract from the forward motion, that they continually wanna tug us back. Yet, that's the part of public life that is probably the worst. But I will say this, that I'm, I'm very thankful for each one of you folks here that's at the table. We don't always agree, but everyone has stepped up. We may have differences, but we can change, we can change those differences if we work together. I wanna say thank you to all of our management personnel for the city, the ones that count the numbers, the ones that talk together and make sure that we can continue to go forward. Our police officers, our police chief, our fire department. Fire department started out the year, I think, what was it, four calls on New Year's Day? Folks, we need to, we need to get volunteers out in every area of this city. I wish I could physically do it still, but I can't. And I'm appealing to every citizen in the city of Ridgewood to please step up and be a part to help make this city continue to go forward and keep it as great as it is. We're a small town. We know each other. There's no reason that we can't keep this thing going in the direction that we are going. So, with that, I say, thank y'all, everyone, for a great 2022. And I'm definitely looking forward to a much greater 2023. And I believe it can happen with the people that we have here running the show. Just give them a chance, let them do what they need to do. So, that's all I've got. Okay, next up on the agenda, future agenda items.
Mayor Council will have the city manager review, council policy. We're bringing, we'll be bringing some council policy as far as guidelines and policies recommended by the Charter Review Commission. We can amend the, the ordinance as requested by Mr. Fountain earlier to change that, to allow the board members to participate more than one board if needed. And we'll also have an after-action, after-action report on the diesel spill. We should have everything in total by then. We'll bring that to council as well.
Anything else?
I'd like to request that we, if council's okay, if we move the city manager's evaluation to earlier, because if we have so much going on at that meeting and putting it as an executive session, in the end, sometimes they run long, and it would be much easier to do and devote, like, just the time to that, and just have that one thing on it, maybe January 30th?
So, have a separate meeting?
Yeah, have a prior meeting, so we can discuss, because the last few times that we've done it, we've always felt rushed. It's at the end of a long meeting. We're all kinda ready to go home.
Why don't we do it, why don't we do it at the meeting after the monthly meeting?
That's what I just.
Not one before, but let's keep it in February.
Oh, okay. We can, I mean, we can do that, but that would be after his, he's supposed to be done yearly by a certain time.
Well, council can, it says, or, doesn't it say when, or when council prescribes, I guess, like, it's.
Would that work with you?
guess, like it's annually, or when council decides?
Okay, he has no objection to having afterwards?
Does it matter before or after? I mean, I'm just curious.
No, I think the language in the contract says y'all can.
I have an objection to that.
We can do evaluation anytime, we used to do, with BWA, we'd move it around all the time.
Right, right.
So we'll, we'll set it up for, what about the following?
So that was, well, that was the reason I was worried, because February has the four-day holiday and stuff like that, so, and February's a shorter month, so that's why I was asking to move it up, so the sixth or the twenty-seventh are the only Mondays that are left in that month, that's why I was.
Doesn't have to be a Monday, right?
No, it doesn't have to be a Monday, it could be.
Yeah, the only day the city's closed is the twenty.
Okay.
Right, that Monday.
Let's look at the twenty-first, that, that's a good open, gives us a little time, and we don't have.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first of February?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Nah, I can't make it Tuesday night.
Yeah, that's what.
You can't make it on Tuesday?
Mondays are easier for us, too.
Coaching basketball.
Yeah.
What about Thursday, the twenty-third?
I can do that.
Anybody else got a problem with Thursday, the twenty-third? That'll give us a full night to deal with, you know, to take care of everything.
Thursday, okay with you?
Okay, Thursday, the twenty-third, we'll meet for the review.
Yeah, that's a good idea, those sometimes get long.
You do, especially if we're doing all these policy things, like, that makes me nervous, I would much rather not be, and then, oh, and then I was gonna ask if the mayor or city manager could forward all the previous performance evaluations for Mr. Forrester to council, so that we can kind of review and compare?
I don't think we have any written, nothing was written out of those that, that I remember, if we do, I'll find them, but normally with the way we talk with him and, and give him the instructions, and I think you write them down, don't you?
Well, that would be great, any written, you know, anything that's written, just to help us refresh of what was last year, because last year, it was back in November, so it's been like a year and, a year and a half, pretty much, rather than the yearly review, we're now, you know, if we keep pushing it back, we're now at a year and a half, almost, year and four months, so, that's the only reason I was saying, you know, go ahead and do it in January, but we can keep pushing it back, I was just curious if we have any written, anything to go off of?
Not, not that I remember, I'll look back on my notes.
Okay.
And see, but normally all of that comes in with just the, we, all we have is the, come out with was just the, the roster and the minutes, that's it. Okay, anything else?
Taking applications for our BWA rep, hopefully I can get somebody to apply by the next meeting, and we'll put that on the agenda.
I believe that will be reported by the next meeting, I have, I forgot the verification down.
Okay. All right.
Do you have any one more comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I really hope that the actions of some of the council members haven't discouraged people that may be watching from applying for BWA or for applying for any of the other boards or commissions or whatever, it's highly discouraging to see volunteers turned away, and them to expect that people are gonna want to apply to volunteer and risk getting turned down, very discouraging.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
There's two people I'm on right now.
I do get to go back and watch.
They watch.
They do, they comment on.
That ladder was two or ten? I understand.
BWA, just for info, obviously BWA, it's, it's an easy, easy board, it's pretty good, they have a lot of good group of guys, and it's, you learn a lot, it's, it's very informative, and you realize that a lot goes on. It's, you'll learn a lot about the water situation in Resoria County.
Essentially, Dow gets it all.
Yeah, we have, pretty much, yeah.
Dow gets it all, we get whatever it doesn't get.
All right, anything else? It's at fifteen, and we.